3:00 PM and I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Virtual Special Meeting. City Clerk, can I have a little?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila.
Here, hi Merlin.
Hi. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez. Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Damian.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estada.
Here, thank you for that, City Clerk. And I believe at this moment, I will open Public Communications. Chief Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody looking to speak?
No, Mayor, we don't have speakers for the five o'clock.
Great, so at this moment, I will move to close Public Communications and we do have an open session, a study session with David Marquez, Senior Project Manager from California Consult.
Pick it away, David. You may not know he's muted. You're muted.
Alright, thank you, everybody, Council. Mr. Salvar, Enrique Salvar, and Mayor. Thank you for the invitation and opportunity to speak on two topics that are related. Baldwin Park Current and Future Grant Opportunities and the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of 2021. So, I, I, for the presentation, I welcome any questions during. So, during the presentation, that's fine with me. I don't need to wait up till the end and stuff. So if there needs for any clarification or a question during the presentation, please. Ask. Okay, so proceed to the next thing. Okay. Since working with California Consulting, but really actually working with the city of Baldwin Park. I, I can't believe, I think it's been six years, so it might be four, five, six, it's a blur. But we've acquired about forty, a little over forty-five million dollars in grant funds. In support of capital projects and human services programs to address relative needs to, relative to recreation and parks, open space, transportation, housing, planning, homelessness, public safety, and climate change, other items. So it's been, it's been diverse, it's been across the board in terms of the grant fund, the grant funds that we have received. And I think if Council was apprised, I believe, that we have received nine hundred and, almost a million dollars yesterday from the Rivers Mountains Conservancy to help us put the capstone on, on the Big Dalton Wash Trail, San Gabriel River Commuter, commuter trail. So we've got that approval yesterday from the RMC, so we're very thankful for that. It was a great team effort. And it was, it's, it's a project that's like three or four years in the, in the making with, I think, four or five different grant funding sources. So, okay, and next, next. Okay, and I'm not going to go through all of these grants and stuff, but I just, the purpose of this is to let you know the diversity of, of, of the programs and departments and that have been funded. We look at recreation parks, open space, public safety, transportation. One thing that we could be very proud of is, you know, the, the, the funding for homelessness planning and projects and, and planning and, and so. It, it, it runs, you know, across the board, you know, Stormwater Grant Program. So it's very diverse, it's not just simply one department. It's, it's many of our departments across the, across the board in our city that have been, that have received funding and will continue to. Okay? Alright, next slide. How can we continue to be competitive? I think we've achieved, I don't think, we have achieved quite a bit. And I think, you know, this is from my perspective, that we, we've reached a really positive level and, but there's other need, there's continuing needs and opportunities that we must take advantage of it. We must be prepared to do that and continue to apply the best practices that we have used that enabled us to, to receive and continue to be competitive and receive grants. So what I wanted to illustrate here is how we can continue to be competitive and, and, and why we are and what we're going to continue to do. And one of the reasons I see, and I'm going to reference other, you know, I've worked with a lot of other cities up and down the state and Southern California, Central California, and Northern California on grant administration, grant development, preparation. And we, what's very clear is simply having the need is insufficient. We must convince our funders that our proposed projects and programs are rooted and guided by an adopted strategy, i.e. our general plan, which we're updating, and have community support. I can't emphasize that enough. So many times, you know, we're asked to work on grant opportunities that emerge from City Hall, but there has been no community input to provide broad and deep support and guidance. We've had that, and I think that's been exceptional in the city of Baldwin Park from my vantage point as a former community organizer. I'm very appreciative of that. And have a strong history of program performance. That means that leads into fiscal compliance, that we meet our program and project objectives, and we deliver our reports on time. Because the state departments and, and the county and the feds, they have our eyes on us and a long time, people have been there for a while, and so they have a long memory. So when you fail to comply and meet your deliverables, they know, they take note. And I've worked with cities where I've had to get them, you know, into compliance, and it's very difficult. But when you have a culture that strives to, strives for excellence, I think you will generally deliver on performance. The other item is organizational capacity, and that speaks to, on the community and speaks to staff. And one thing I want to emphasize is that when I'm putting together these grants, writing these grants, it's continual coordination with staff. And staff is working with community and they're working with each other. So we kind of avoid that silo effect. And, and that we're, we're prepared and knowledgeable, and I do find that with the city. So personnel prepared to implement and deliver the program project and ability to leverage resources, collaborate, and successfully engage with our local and regional agencies such as SCAG, the, the Cog, River Mountains Conservancy, neighboring communities. Because, for instance, on the homeless applications, we've worked with the city of Elmani and South Elmani. And that is, speaks to what I would say is our broad and insightful understanding of this homelessness, homelessness problem that we have to deal with it locally and regionally at the same time and continue to work and develop these relationships with nonprofit organizations. Couple things, they, they enhance our capacity, they make us more competitive, and it keeps us rooted into the community. And I'll speak a little bit more about this later. And interdepartmental coordination, operate as a team, avoid the silo effect, which I've seen at many other cities. Is that many of the projects that we've, that have been funded have not been, have required the work of, you know, two, maybe three departments and their input. So we need to kind of collaborate. Interdepartmental coordination is very important. And I think that speaks to our success. Okay? Next. Okay. At this point, I want to segue into the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act of 2021. Just kind of an overview, because what we do have now is really, not all the details are in place. Even though it's a huge bill, maybe like ten inches thick, that, you know, typical of infrastructure bill. California's getting a per capita, we're, California is not receiving as much as other states per capita in terms of amount, yes, because we, because of our population, obviously. So there's the, there's the usual funding for roads and bridges, public transportation, bridge repairs, water infrastructure, very important, airport infrastructure. What's new and significant is something that we should pay attention to is additional funding for, that hasn't been really typical in infrastructure. Bills or funding before is EV charging stations, broadband coverage, which I know the supervisor is very focused on, so we can kind of close that digital divide. And funding for wildfire risk reduction and emergency preparedness. For instance, we are just received notice that we have, we're proceeding. We've been allowed to proceed on a grant to develop and our Emergency Operations Center. And that speaks to emergency preparedness, that will speak to getting, you know, generators or materials for a future Emergency Operations Center. That's been highlighted also in the Infrastructure Investment Act of 2021. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, how the funds will be distributed throughout the state. This is not fixed in stone, it's being worked out. There is details that need to be kind of fleshed out, but we'll start seeing this in the next, the next six months, because I know there's a strong interest in getting the money out and funding existing projects. On the federal agencies will use pre-designed formulas that incorporate variables such as population and existing infrastructure to standardize how much states receive for eligible projects. There's projects that are existing that will get, that will get direct funding. You know, that was pretty much decided up in, in Washington DC. We talk about formula funding. We're looking at funding that's basically determined by demo, by demographics, population for the most part. We can estimate, though it's not official, that sixty percent of infrastructure funds going towards, will go state, going to state programs. Forty percent will go to local and regional programs through a combination of formula funding and grants. And what I noted here is that we'll probably use a dispersment model similar to SB one, which was a transportation bill, transportation funding, and SB two. And with regards to these, those monies were passed out through per capita grants and also through competitive grants available to municipalities, but also to MPOs such as SCAG and the Cog. So what's, will be, I could see us applying, you know, applying for grants. And we have received grants that have been offered through SCAG and through the Cog, and we can see that continuing. So it's not just coming from a state department. And then as you know, that at the state level, elected officials will have a chance to compete for additional federal infrastructure funding in the forms of grants and loans themselves. So that's what's going on in Sacramento. And as I mentioned a little bit before, we can anticipate grants issued through state agencies, obviously, and to regional MPOs, including SCAG and the San Gabriel Valley Cog. How much? I don't know. That speaks to the need to continue our strong communication with these regional agencies. Okay, next. Next steps. So to prepare us for the future, but to continue, you know, being competitive for grants, as I said in the first slide. We, what I would recommend is that we probably do kind of a, a kind of an assessment and start, you know, looking ahead and reconvene, use some of the best practices that we've already been using now and just, you know, update across departments our grant funding strategy based on current assessment and existing infrastructure needs. The Baldwin Park of today is not the same as the Baldwin Park of two, three, four, or five years ago. For instance, we, you know, three, four, five years ago, we received planning grants. Now we're beyond the planning grants, and some of these were, you know, we're putting, we're doing infrastructure, we're doing, we're doing construction. We're implementing capital projects, so we're at a next level. So I think it's really a good time, and you should always kind of continue to assess. I think on, for my part, is continue to have the, the dialogue and the relationship with leadership at City Hall, with the departments, knowing what's going on, what they're looking at, and, and continuing that. I don't want to work in a silo. So, so a note, a state will leverage federal funds and push on housing production, active transportation, road safety. I know road safety has been highlighted and bridging the digital divide. I'm sorry, there's a typo there. So, but broadband, emergency preparedness, etc. And we need to determine how ready to apply for future funding. We are more competitive when we already have a local plan and policies in place aligned with regional and state objectives and goals. This has benefited us in the past and it will in the future. For instance, meeting our regional housing neighborhood assessment goals, updating housing policies. Many times with the grants that I prepare, I really look towards the documents, I look to council action. I look to staff reports, I use those as reference tools to help guide. So I know what we want now, and I need, when I prepare the grants, and we always prepare the grants. They're Baldwin Park specific, it's not general language and just addressing needs. What is being discussed and what has been documented and at, at City Hall? And what is being communicated also from the community, from our residents, our stakeholders. I take that into account. And so also continue communication and relationship building with regional and local partners that I mentioned before. Okay, and I think that might be it, but I want to see if there's any questions or anything that I may have some areas that you want me to cover that were not covered in the slides.
Great. So, thank you, thank you for the presentation, David. I did want to ask if we could look into, there is, I was made aware that there is opportunities for cannabis grants. And as we do allow commercial cannabis here in the city, we might be eligible for some of those from the state. So, you know, I want to make sure we're able to get any money from, you know, all sources that we qualify for.
Okay, well noted. Definitely put that. Okay, other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Hi, David, thank you again for this presentation. I'm sorry to join, you know, a little tardy here. Again, I'm just going to reiterate, if you can just continue to look for grants for the police department, whether it's for body cam, support, youth development items in and around, you know, with the police department, they have a great program. But if there's a way to help augment or supplement what they're doing, that'd be great. In addition to any youth, you know, workforce development issues that we could look towards under the Wreckin' Parks Department. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, definitely. Workforce development is something that we looked, I think, I know that we have grant out there, we're waiting to hear from, from the county with regards to recre, recreational access that has some workforce development components. I like also with our Prop 68 grants, which I think we've got a total of three and then plus the RMC grant, there is workforce development included in those applications. So those workforce development is included, youth development is included. And I know that I, I spoke to Mr. Carillo with Manny and looking at, you know, programs at ARC and doing more programs there, some art programs. With, with regards to public safety, we've heard good news. We got through the first round and the second round now with the development for funding to plan and develop an Emergency Operations Center for our, for the police department. Spoken to the chief about it, I think, early December, and we're very fortunate. And so I would like to think that hopefully we get an award somewhere around April, May to do that, but.
And then just one, also, one last thing too is, you know, if we could look at also besides, you know, open space programming, right? I know you've, you mentioned some stuff like that, but if there's a way of, you know, looking at private foundations in and around, you know, definitely homelessness. As you're probably aware, the Hilton Foundation spends a lot of their money in and around homeless initiatives. So if we can look at that, you know, I know that a lot of the stuff that we are doing or the work that you do do certainly focus around, you know, governmental agencies, entities, excuse me, around funding, which is great. But, you know, we got to also look at also private foundations, because there's a way of building long-term partnerships and also getting some, you know, large figure funding from them. And that's something that, you know, we still haven't tapped into as, as well as I think we can. So just be aware, if you could just be mindful of that as you, as you continue to move through this. And I say an example would be the Amundson Foundation, they do a lot in and around law enforcement. So again, just, you know, as we think about the various pots of money that are out there, let's not forget about the private entities. Target, Target Foundation also used to give quite a bit of money for, for public safety. And that includes our fire department. So if there is grants that come around that help our brothers and sisters over on the fire department side, there's no reason for us not to think about that and work with them, because that ultimately benefits our residents and our station. So.
I agree, I agree. We have looked at it and will continue to. I'm very familiar with the Hilton Foundation and Amundson. So, yeah, definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. David, I, I just want to say thank you for your involvement in the RMC grant. You know, that's going to help us continue the, the phase of, the, the next phase of, you know, a project that is near and dear to my heart, which is Walnut Creek Nature Park and its connectivity to, you know, through the Big Dalton Wash, but also to the San Gabriel river path. And so that's really exciting. There's been a lot of wins on this project, and I just want to say thank you for the last win. And I want to thank our staff too, with Recreation and Community Services and Public Works and everybody that contributed, along with California Consulting. Because this is going to be a really special project once it's done. And it's, it's come in phases, and it's been, you know, a dream in the works for at least a decade. So just want to say thank you for this, this latest win. It's exciting. And I did encourage our staff to, let's look at ways that we can bring in more grants working with regional entities, most likely, as we create that connectivity to the San Gabriel River Path. Because we're going to be dealing with like the county jurisdiction and, you know, possibly other cities. So anything that you see out there, keep that in mind as well. But definitely want to say thank you for all your work and working with our staff and for that recent win with the RMC.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I appreciate it. Again, I can't say enough, it's a, it's a team effort. Everybody brings their strength to the table, and we, we do it collectively. And I, with Walnut Creek Nature Park, that is very special in the sense that's a jewel. And that was to me like a springboard, everything, what was done there. It was sort of like the, yeah, like the springboard. And we learned a lot with the development of Walnut Creek Nature Park. And, and that led to other ideas and ideas that worked. And we applied them and we replicated them and we expanded upon them. So that, so it's sort of like the beginning, you know, sort of like the genesis. Because that was a project that took something that was just a terrible situation and converted into something led to something incredible in the before years, and it steamerled in a very, very positive way. So, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and I want to mention that it's, you know, with, it's not me with, I will, I bring in several people, you know, at a time when I need them. I can pick who I want and, and to help out. So sometimes we have a lot of work and stuff like that, so I could bring others. So it's just not me. Sometimes I, I have, you know, my colleagues and coworkers that I pull in to do some stuff. So, you know, we want to do it right. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. So, and then David, of course, you know, we've been really, I think we've been really good at our homeless efforts here in the city. You know, we're not only spearheading, but setting the example for everybody in the valley, right? So we, you know, our tiny homes have helped individuals eighteen and over, and they range from young adolescents all the way up to seniors. We're working on our second location where we've, you know, locked in the grant for construction, but we want to keep those efforts going. And focus also on, you know, homeless youth, and that includes also our LGBTQIA community that also have some issues finding a safe, a safe place. And then, of course, another issue, domestic violence, right? One of the leading causes of women going homelessness, going homeless. So we also want to keep that in mind.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, we're not going to let that go. We have a long way to go on the homeless issue, whether it's family youth, domestic violence. Yeah, I think we've demonstrated, the city has demonstrated quite a bit of leadership on this, but it's such a complex problem, we have a long way to go.
Yeah. So thank you for that. So I don't know if there's any more questions, comments, concerns from our staff or our council.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to make just a brief comment more on the administrative side. You know, going back a few months, at the time Mayor Pro Tem Avila, Councilmember Avila now, had asked us to ensure that we get, you know, on the full investment out of our relationship with California Consulting. And the entire management team, executive team in the city worked on this. But with the good disposition and the, the great partnership that we had built over the years with California Consulting, we were able to strike a really good revised agreement. You know, we, with that comes additional support, if you can imagine David helping us even more. But he does, and like you mentioned earlier, he brings in additional supplemental staff from within his company to help with the peaks of work demand, depending on where we are on any given grant application. But wanted to point that out, that we did renegotiate the contract. We think it's a very fair agreement, and it's, the, obviously the proof is in the pudding. As we win this grant awards, Councilmember Avila just wanted to point that out because you had made that a, a, a very clear objective.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, Enrique, you're correct, and I, and I thank you for that and negotiating with David. David, thank you for that presentation. I really needed to see something like that, a report to give me a better outlook of all the work that you are doing out there and that you continue to do. And as the mayor mentioned earlier, the, the homeless work, the grants that you are doing to help our homeless. It, it is one of our priorities, because like you said, it's very complex and money is needed for everything, for whether it's for housing, mental health, whether it's for single individual families, which is our next project to work on, on getting grants to be able to help our families here in our community that are homeless. Those type of grants are extremely important in order for us to continue to provide those services. So thank you for that presentation, and thank you, when you hear of any new grants for the homeless, please keep us posted. I agree, we must work together, we must communicate at all times so that we know who's on first, who's on second. who's on first, who's on second, and and always be aware of where we're at, and maybe some people may have different ideas, and we can combine them to continue to the work that you're doing. So thank you, David, for the presentation, and thank you, Enrique, for bringing them aboard again to present this.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, yes, um, with regards to the homeless, I um in terms of grants, we have to look at private foundations. We have to look at um our regional partners, and we have to look at the state um housing, community development. But as um mentioned before, um, there's private foundations, and they can be very focused, and and sometimes that's what we need. I I think staff at the city is very attuned to this, and um so we will pull what we can from different sources. Um, and um, and it it is complex, but I do think that, you know, we we are developing partners. I mean, con- continuing where we we had our planning grant and what it told us to do, and that gave us a strategy. We're adhering to that, and then we're learning more and applying um um other facets to this effort. Um, I think three, four years ago, we couldn't conceive of the tiny homes project. And and now you have it, and I do work with some project up in um Solano County. Um, and they heard about what was happening in Baldwin Park, and that was fantastic, because then I could chime in and you know, let them know, hey, this is the way Baldwin Park did it, you know? So it's taking models and applying somewhere else, and um I love that. So um, but it's all comes down to leadership at at all levels. That's what it comes down to.
Thank you, David, again.
Hey, well, thank you, David, for your presentation. It was very informational, and thanks for hearing out the council and hearing out our priorities when we when we look for grants. Um, and then Enrique, acting on that request, I know it was important to our Councilmember Avila. Um, and I think it's also important for the community to know, you know, the partnerships that we have and what the community is gaining out of it. And I know that this year has been a really big year for us, for grant and grant money. I mean, you know, it's it's been a really good year. So, you know, we also want the community to be aware of that as well. So thank you for being with us today.
Well, thank you, and I got my list.
Sorry, can we get a copy of your PowerPoint?
Oh, yeah, I sent it to Laura this.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so it should be there. Thanks.
Great. All right. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I think at this point, we are ready to move into a closed session, so I will see all the council members and uh necessary staff there.